Good evening, I'd like to call our Township Board meeting in order. We'll start with a pledge. Pledge of the evening.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, and the clerk please call the roll.
Supervisor Paulin, here.
Treasury Horning, here.
Clerk Jopiu, here.
Trustee Collier, here.
Trustee Germaine, here.
Trustee Harper, here.
Trustee Petrucci, here.
Thank you. Item number four is approval of our meeting agenda.
Oh.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Petrucci, second by Treasurer Horning. Any discussion? Do we want to add CIP to nine B? Yes. We still have approval on that.
Would we like to move some of the items where we have discussion from staff earlier instead of after the discussion? Like rearrange the discussion sections, you know what I'm saying?
They're by priority. We tried that in our admin meeting, we asked him about that and he said they're in priority order.
That and I question how many of them we'll even get to, which is why the first item is setting a special meeting day.
The, this is not on there to make our agenda look like we're going to be here till midnight. All the outstanding issues that we have, so we can start getting a feel of what we can try to pick off on our next special meeting.
Does that mean we're going till nine o'clock tonight?
I don't think so, because we do have a closed session as well. So, we just want to continue the discussion on CIP. Do we still have support for that? In second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed nay. Motion carries. Call to the public? Anybody to call to the public this evening? Yes, sir. Uh, there's a, uh, date. Yeah. Yeah, well, that's an agenda item, but that's the right place. A year and a half. A year and a half. But we'll get to it. We'll have, we'll have some discussion on it. Item number six is approval or consent agenda.
So moved, support.
Motion by Trustee Colani, second by Trustee Harper. Any discussion? Be in on, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed nay, motion carries. Item number seven A, Lake Tyrone sewer update. Brian Johnk here, Brian, welcome this evening. You can either stand or sit, whatever you're more comfortable with.
We have a visual, visual for the, here?
I don't have this. Yeah, I can do that.
Can you get one up above?
Yep.
Where Bob's at?
Well, thanks for having me tonight. It's been a while since I've been in front of you and I wanted to come and give you an update, especially in light of the, uh, the bid results coming in for the initial project scope. And, um, I think all of you have received, uh, my most recent letter and it kind of gives you a broad overview of, of what's been happening. So, um, just to kind of recap, uh, we had our bid opening for the project and on your, on your map, it's essentially the, the second sheet. Um, that's what we were, uh, we were effectively bidding, um, for the end part of 2014. Um, the bids came in high, uh, actually just slightly over a million high is, uh, the bid. And, um, I'm not going to say, uh, that, uh, th- this is, this is extraordinarily high percentage in terms of it come over, uh, you know, it takes down to fifty percent, uh, over, over estimates. But it's not unusual, I guess, given, uh, the climate, uh, today as, as the economy begins to expand and we're seeing an increase in, in cost. In talking to the contractor and talking to other bidders, and there should be a bid tab that I passed around there, which gives you all of the bids that we received. So, our lowest bid was about a million dollars over. The highest bid was nearly two million dollars over. So, there's, there's quite an overage there, which we, obviously we were concerned about. But the vast majority of the overage comes down to the work on the lake. And the work on the lake consists of replacing the force main. It's actually a force main, so you can see on the picture on the wall there, the yellow portion of the force main that runs along the edge of the lake. So, that's your, I guess, the, the standard method for upsizing a line that's, that's severely undersized is, uh, is to replace it with a larger size. And while we were doing that, it made sense to replace some of the weak points we have, which are the small PVC stubs that we have connecting to each tank. And on those stubs, we have a check valve and a gate valve. And that's most often what we're responding to when we receive emergency calls out there where something's not working correctly. It's one of those valves generally is, has something wrong with it. So, uh, at that time, you know, since we're going to be there, we figure might as well replace them all at once. That was written into the project scope. It made sense for the contractor to, to do it in volume instead of us doing it piecemeal. However, the bids came, in looking at the bids, uh, we found that actually the contractor's bid was significantly more costly to replace those, uh, those individual connections than when we're doing it. Basically, and we're doing it in part on an emergency basis, so our costs go up, obviously when we're working after hours, but it was significantly more expensive for that contractor, um, to the tune of about a thousand dollars per connection. Uh, so very significant, um, uh, costs. So, looking at the high costs, um, and, and knowing that this is a huge burden for the property owners, we began to look for alternatives to that project scope. And in talking with the engineer, it was suggested by one of our staff members that instead of replacing that force main, that we look at, at providing more outlets. And that effectively does the same thing. To us, the concern isn't with the force main around the lake. Uh, that's a high-density polyethylene pipe, um, is not a PVC, it really doesn't have any stated lifespan. Uh, so we're not concerned, uh, about that, uh, about that force main running around the lake. It's those PVC connections. So, um, in looking at the costs to replace the individual connections and seeing that we can do them cheaper, it made sense to do it this, this way. Um, and we, just rough estimates, we're figuring about a half a million dollars cost savings. So, the, the design for the new scope of work has just been completed and it will soon be in the hands of the contractor. So, we don't have, um, we don't have, uh, revised quotes. Essentially, we're going to be deleting line items and then adding line items, so there's, there's, there's really not anything that we've got to change or ask for quotes. Uh, it's, for the most part, simple deletions and additions. And, um, and so we hope to get that in the next month, uh, to keep things rolling here. The result of stepping back and redesigning has been that we, uh, were bumped initially from second quarter to third quarter, and then it was obvious that wasn't going to work. I'd tell you, third quarter of our funding on the state, uh, through the state revolving fund. Now, it is fourth quarter funding that we're looking at currently. Um, and so, we have a, a pretty general timeline, uh, timeline, since we're working with the state, we have to have a altered project plan, so everything with the state is dependent on that plan. We recently advertised for the public hearing for that plan, and that will be, uh, April twentieth. We will be holding that public hearing. Once that's approved, then we step through the process that, that you've already seen when the resolutions come in front of you, uh, basically, uh, agreeing or approving the project plan. So, it's, uh, it's not only Heartland Township, obviously Tyrone Township, Livingston County, Board of Commissioners, the, uh, Board of Public Works, all of those entities would have to reapprove the amended project plan. And along with that comes the agreement that we executed several months back, which is the 185 agreement, and I believe a bond authorizing resolution. So, the amounts are effectively the only things that are going to change in those agreements. But that's what we're, uh, we're looking at. And so, in terms of a revised timeline, um, I mentioned the hearing on April twentieth. Following that meeting in early May is when we expect to bring, uh, to this board and to Tyrone Township, uh, the new resolutions, the 185 agreements, and, uh, there's also one other, I think there's bond authorizing resolution. That would be Germaine Board meetings, and we would anticipate, um, the result of that would be the Township's advertising for the special assessment hearing. So, you would do that later in May with the special assessment hearings in June. Once that's all done, we, uh, we will settle up with, with SRF and we're looking at a mid-September closing with SRF and then, at the same time, authorizing the contractor to proceed. Now, there's a couple fundamental differences in, in this project scope. Obviously, we, we're not doing all of the work down on the lake. So, in the initial project, we were going to have during the summer months, uh, about two-thirds of the lake disturbed around the perimeter, uh, because all the materials would have to be brought in and trucked up and down that shoreline. That's one of the reasons for the, uh, the larger costs. Um, so that's going to change. With the exception of about five points where we're going to make tie-ins down there, there is really not going to be any disturbance. So, the good thing for the residents is that they don't have that summer-long pounding of traffic down there. This is going to be done throughout the winter, so, uh, and the disturbance will be limited primarily to the road.
How is this going to, is this going to get coordinated with Reed Road replacement?
Yes, it is. And with Clyde Road, gravel improvement? It is.
There's been-
Because if it's not timed right, there's going to be some, including probably seven people up here. Because it's happening, that's happening this year? Your project?
Yeah.
So, those won't be done until after that project's done?
Reed Road is mostly going to be pushed off one year. Okay. Consumers is also putting in the gas down that road.
And Clyde Road won't be done until after they, they're done then?
Well, they're, they're being required to come off the road edge more than originally anticipated, because that's just route, most likely, or limestone, most likely that one will still stay on as intended.
Yeah, that timing issue, we've got to look at that, because it'd be terrible to put a, fix that road and then have all this equipment come down there.
Which ones?
The Reed Road.
Reed Road has been pushed by the Livingston County Road Commission, based on the recommendation of the, not only the sewer project, it was unbeknownst to us that consumers was coming in to do, uh, replacement of gas tanks along Reed Road, uh, the south side of, uh, Lake Tyrone as well. So, quite frankly, the sewer project will be up against the gas company, so.
Brad, we talked about this before, you know, kind of bringing on a used car, this, this system, and what do you, what do you, what do you feel, is there any risk to the, you know, to the balance of the regional system, bringing on what you have proposed here?
Well, there's always risk, um, when you're, when you're bringing on new infrastructure. And there's certainly some risk when you're bringing on brand-new infrastructure. Um, and that's what it takes, I know we've talked about that at length at prior meetings, is, does this place an undue burden on the, the existing users of the system? And that's why, uh, we went through and looked at our costs, uh, to replace these. And that's, that's really our weak point. Our weak point is in those connections, and we looked at the, the range of costs that we incur from going in there, whether it be a planned activity with relatively low cost, all the way up to one of those, you know, Sunday afternoon, uh, it's, it's flowing, it's in the middle of the winter, we've got to have a contractor, a hauler in our vector truck out there. Uh, so we looked at the whole array and, um, uh, and when you look at the, at the cost for us to do, to do that, coupled with the price of those pumps, which are a different pump than a grinder, they're an ethylene pump, um, the cost actually to do this piecemeal and with the, with the cost of those pumps is actually less than the replacement cost of a grinder.
So, my point is, or question would be then, you're going to add a cost factor into these homes to replace those? Part of the scope of what you're proposing includes the cost to replace those aging pumps, regardless if it's five hundred or eight hundred, wherever you feel that cost is going to be?
Well, that's in the, in the Livingston regional rate structure currently.
And in our rate structure? They'd get a surcharge for that.
They're getting surcharge. And my point was that the current surcharge, the current surcharge is more adequate for the replacement of these ethylene pumps than it is for the grinders on the system.
And again, just, I don't want to get into an argument, but when the brand-new system came in, there was a surcharge for grinder pumps in the current Heartland system, which is fifteen years old. So, you have fifteen years' worth of equity in a brand-new pump.
There's, what's the equity? You've got fifteen years of depreciation and use, I mean, it's being used.
I understand, but there's, when you buy a brand-new car and you start putting in thirty dollars a quarter for that fifteen years dedicated towards those pumps, these pumps are twenty years old, you don't have any reserves built up. So, my question is, if you think you're, you said you can do it cheaper, which is great, but I don't think it's, I still, I'm having a hard time understanding why it would be fair and equitable to the balance of the people that are on the system, if somebody comes in and they last two or three years and their, that other balance of the system is paying for that expense because it's aged. I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah, no, I see, I see what you're saying. And there certainly can be more in-depth analysis that's done, uh, but one aspect of those pumps is, you know, they pump ethylene, so they're not grinding, the wear on them is quite a bit less than on a grinder pump. So, it's, it's actually fairly rare that, uh, we actually have to replace them. It's simply replacing, uh, impeller, uh, the empowers that go inside of them. So, it's, uh, we don't, I don't know when the last time we've actually ordered pump bodies for that. It's actually several years. Um, essentially, it's just maintaining them, and then the cost to replace them, and that's where you get a lot of the makeup there. The cost to replace them is, uh, six hundred dollars as opposed to twenty-three hundred for the grinders. Um, we are also looking at other pumps. Um, we, we just, we ordered a few newer variety of pumps just to test them that are about four hundred and fifty dollars apiece.
I have no problem with that, but I still think that, that should be under consideration, that you're, these pumps are twenty-four years old.
Yeah.
And at some point, they're going to have to either be replaced or, I just, I just want to make sure it's equitable to the balance of the, of the regional, who's, who's been in there for a long time allocating.
And we, we can, we can do more, I mean, obviously it relies a lot on, on assumptions in terms of how long they're going to last, but when you're collecting, I don't know, what's our surcharge, uh, uh, going to be after the seven-year?
Ours is thirty-some dollars a quarter, I don't know. I don't know if you've caught up to us yet or not, um, I don't remember. Not today. Not yet, yeah. I think it's around year four, if memory serves me correctly. Yeah. That will be equitable.
But we're actually collecting some of that in the, in the variable charge. So, when you look at that, you actually have a full, you, you, you've recouped the cost of the pump, not necessarily any of the maintenance is associated with it, but if it's just allocated to the pump in about four years, four and a half years, with, with that, with that rate. So, so it, that, the amount, the differential in the amount, which is about a quarter, makes a big difference in that.
So, the rate will go down?
The, the rate, no, the rate stays the same for all, uh, for all the users.
Regardless of if you have a pump that's going to be, need a six hundred dollar replacement or a thirty-five or four thousand dollar replacement?
Well, and then, that's, that's something that Township can decide, that you have your own rate structure. There is some additional maintenance on these because we have septic tanks, so occasionally we have to go in there and pump them, um, because they fill up with solids. So, there is a little bit more maintenance associated with them, that's somewhat of an offset.
And the-
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
And the connection, the weak point, is also what was, is being accounted for in that, certainly as I would expect from Township point of view, as we get a couple of years under our belts and kind of see what expenses are, we may see a day where there's a separate surcharge for those pumps and connections versus the other grinder pumps on the system. For now, you're suggesting it's fairly equitable, maybe, other than the depreciation may not be fully accounted for. Can you speak with the connections, I mean, there, there's, it could be another expense and that could be a risk. You were saying that with this approach, it would reduce the pressure and we think the connections would be less prone to, to fail?
Right. Yeah, in, in this scenario here, there, uh, we figure there's probably anywhere between fifty and seventy-five connections that we have to replace. A lot of those we've replaced because they've broken, and when we go in, we'll replace them with brass, uh, with, with brass check valves. However, um, uh, for the remainder, those will still need to be, uh, will be replaced. And James, you have to forgive me, because I just, I just went blank on your question there. Repeat that.
Well, you, uh, the, you know, part of our concern was those connections have been failing, with this new system, the overall pressure would be reduced and the thought would, we wouldn't see the frequency of failure in those connections.
Yeah, the, the pressure's a big one. That's effectively why they fail, is, is the pressure, and when we have a, a large rain event, um, and the system's undersized as it is, uh, then we see, uh, significant pressures, um, in that line. Now, this is going to reduce, and I forget what the pressure is, they put it in your letter, but, um, you know, fifteen, twenty to thirty PSI, um, reduction in the, in the average pressure, just from the fact that we're now taking that ethylene off the main, uh, force main through five separate channels now. So, the same thing would happen if we enlarged the line, if we reduced the pressure.
So, so this project is not going to reduce the infiltration and flow from the rainstorms?
No. No. Now, in the original project, we had some money budgeted if we ran across, uh, if we ran across any of that, but with the new, with the new one, the new scope of work, we're not going to be down there. So, unless we had a special effort to do that, and we can, I think, do that as part of our normal maintenance. The reality is, when you look at the volume that we're generating, uh, from the system, it's extraordinarily low. I mean, it actually, of all the systems we maintain, it's showing the lowest flow per home. I think it was down in the hundred and fifty gallons per home range. Obviously, when it rains, um, we have more volume, that's not unusual for a system, but it's still extraordinarily low.
I'm still trying to understand, where's the infiltration coming from? Come from some pumps, is it coming from?
Some pumps tied in, um, there's some, you know, when our guys find them, they'll repair them, but you have risers, uh, maybe they're not, the ceiling, the sealant has cracked, so, um, you know, you have the topography channeling water to the tops of these things that may not be secured tightly, and you get infiltration that way, but-
But there, at the end of the day, how is this all going to get metered? Is it just, these are all basically going to be on our use, right? So, is there a master meter of some sort coming from this, so we know what kind of... The reason why I'm bringing this up is, if there's more flow than it should be entering into that, you're saying you have low flow there, but if they're having, if you're treating stormwater, the rest of the entire system is paying for that stormwater.
Right.
And that, that, that's something that, as, in some respects, it's, it's almost like educating the folks around, uh, you know, and no different than anyone having to maintain their septic fields and things like that, just the right way and wrong way. If they're having some pumps, the effect of, of connecting a some pump during a rainstorm is partly the blame for one of the problems they have, right?
Yeah, uh, that's true. And I think what we plan to do is we actually, we looked at the possibility of installing metering pits up there to take care of that, um, but you're talking about very significant expense to do that, it's a number of meters.
Well, yeah, I'm not, metering, I'm just talking about-
Yeah.
-educating folks that, you know, there's a problem here when you're connecting your some pump directly to the sanitary.
Yes, absolutely. Now, we do include that in our dues and dones, and, uh, and of course, when we run upon that in the field, we'll talk, we'll talk to the, the homeowners. The problem with that becomes the enforcement, and, and how do you ensure that that's, that gets done out there? So, that's, we need to talk about that a little bit more in terms of, of, of how do we police that?
We were forced when, uh, when we put ours in, we were forced to separate our, um, like your brine, your softener.
Yeah.
We were forced to, to do that. And they actually came and inspected our, our place.
And probably because they had electrical inspection as part of that transition, and so you had somebody that could enter the house. Yeah, and so, so they had that grip hanging over them, okay, we'll sign off on that when this is switched over.
Well, the only reason I, one other reason why I'm bringing it up is, is, I'm sure it's fine right now in terms of the amount of flow, but eventually, um, Genesee is going to have to consider the peak flow coming out of there and how that could translate into higher costs for the entire system, because one area is allowing more infiltration to enter into the, into the system. Am I wrong on that?
Well, that's typically how it works. As this system gets older, you may have the reverse, and that's because this is a pressure system. And so, what happens when, when you have an aging system and the lines break, on a gravity system, the water goes into it.
Right.
On a pressure system, the water goes out, uh, when there's a crack. So, you know, if you dug up the whole thing, you'd probably be surprised about the number of cracks out there that are releasing water, is probably the reason why the flows are so low. So, you may actually have the reverse through on these pressure systems. Now, um, I will say, one thing that we have spec'd on this, we asked the engineers to do, is at the, at the township lines, we're going to cut, both sides of the lake, we're going to cut the force main, the caps up. And then, we're also asking the contractor to spec metering pits up along the road. And the reason for that is if there is a, if there is an issue, if we're seeing abnormally high flows and we're trying to track it down and, and, you know, everybody's rates going up, uh, your, your charges going up because we have so much flow, um, we want the ability to come in there with a portable meter and set up and meter that on temporary basis. So, that was kind of the way to do it without incurring an awful lot of cost for permanent metering pits. On top of that, you have to have the electricity and everything else. The temporary metering pit, we could, we could do it with a, with a portable meter.
Did I, I'm sorry. Is the overall system going to have a master meter?
Yes.
Okay, all right, let's make sure I understand.
Yes, there's one master.
So, that, that was, thanks, that's a good clarification. The red area at the north end of the, of the lake, I noticed there's a note there that that wants, that's, that's the old fields, once that's banned and it's being turned over to the association. Has there been any thought about then, is, right now, it's owned by, uh, the DPW and the county, correct?
It's owned by the Drainage District.
The Drainage District. Wouldn't it make more sense, or maybe the association may want to consider this, from a possibly, uh, selling that or a portion of that to help fund some of the improvements that are going around the lake?
That's one possibility, they, they know that, um, of course-
But see, here's the, here's the situation, once you turn it over to the association, I don't know how legal the, the association is, I know it's an active one, but it gets kind of, if, more difficult for that to happen or in a way. So, I'm just wondering if it makes more sense that the district and the association talk a little bit about that and possibly look for an opportunity there to help defray some of the overall costs around the lake?
Yeah, it's a good point. Although that was one of our concerns, there was some question about the association and, and its incorporated status, and so they had at one point, um, a local attorney look at that, and while there are some limitations with that association, our understanding, it's been a while since I've seen that, that, uh, that letter from the attorney, but they are able legally to- to hold property.
So I haven't doubted it has a legal, the problem is, is however the structure is set up on the association, and I don't know, I don't know how it is.
I think you're just saying it's easier.
It's a much, right now, you have a governmental entity that owns it and that entity is also incorporated for the benefit of all the lake residents already. It just seems like before you decide you might want to transfer to the association, that perhaps there's a, from a legal standpoint, if the association plans on selling a portion anyway, or all of it anyway, to help, that the mechanism by which it makes more sense, it would make more sense to have the district do that or sell a portion of it, use that, offset some of the costs and then perhaps transfer with the remainder back to the association for some park or whatever they may want to use it for. But it just seems to me before you, I would carefully consider that before that transfer takes place because, I don't know, I don't know, I wouldn't have any clue right now that, but you're talking about thirty acres, right? Yeah, thirty acre parcel.
I think maybe it's more now, forty something.
It says thirty on here. But in any case, Brian, I just think that maybe we ought to, and I think it needs all to be transparent. I think the association needs to be involved in that discussion since we've already had discussions about turning it over to them. Man, you know, I just know from dealing with associations, I mean, when, you know how it is, when you're trying to get an easement from a condo association, what's involved in that, right?
Oh, yeah.
How difficult that is. They got to have a vote, they got to do all these, you know, and it all depends on what their legal documents tell them to do. And if their legal documents aren't that clear, then all of a sudden you might have a cloud and there's issues. And I just think that right now, it's in the hands of the district. District might be in a better position to transfer.
Yeah, and you're right. We've talked about it a little bit, but you know, and there's, there's been a lot of discussion, obviously, in the pets, we talked about potential for dredging and using that for spoils disposal. Now, I think the lake association wants to pursue aeration out there instead of dredging and that's the direction we're headed. But we, you're right, we do need to have that because if we, if their decision is to sell it, why transfer it for those costs and then, and then have the transfer costs, you know, hit them again? So we will have those conversations before.
So we'll be seeing a lot of you here in the near future, it sounds like, for special meetings and look, does it kind of reset, Brian, like a?
Yeah, basically, yeah. I don't think there's a need this time for the joint meeting. We'll have our hearing and then bring the resolutions back here. But certainly that, and if you, if you'd like me to be at the special assessment hearing, we can certainly do that as well.
Where's the public hearing at?
It's at the Minnesota Oar Creek.
Okay.
So same place we.
If I may, just there was one thing that was discussed here tonight that I would hate to miss opportunity if it's going to be an issue later. Your question about taking on the aged infrastructure without any sort of, you know, accounting for depreciation like we've done in other cases, and when we joined the system or the regional system, you know, we turned over a dollar amount, the representative repair and placement sinking fund for those grinder pumps, that's not what's being proposed here. And if that's, I don't know what the position of the board is on that. If that is a concern to the board, then we've got to know that sooner than later, that we have to address that. So that's.
This would be, I've been pretty vocal about that all along, but I just want to make sure that we're very cautious and we're careful that we're going forward with bringing on something on board that all of a sudden doesn't end up costing the balance of the, and it's the current users. That's, that's the thing. There's not a lot of current users on the sewer system to begin with. So any big anomaly ends up going right back to those individuals. It's not like we have four thousand people on it.
Right.
It's, I think we're around, I don't even know how many people are even on it right now, but it's not even close to its maximum. And you know, would we allow another organization to come in? I know, I know they're in a tough spot. I know there's a lot of issues involved, but if you just had another entity come on and, and we wouldn't have allowed them to use their current septic, you know, just, what was the name of the place? We just, we wouldn't allow them?
Yeah, Forest Brook Hills, we made them pay a certain amount for each year of age for their grinder pumps.
Right. So again, I'm just, I want to make sure that we're, we're treating every entity equitable.
Yeah.
It's just kind of how I feel about it.
No, you're right.
Everybody should have equal share in the cost of the whole project.
And James said it right. He said, you know, if you take out the depreciation part, effectively they become equal or actually it's a little bit more advantageous with the, with the step system. It's, it's the depreciation that we haven't dealt with so far. So I'd be more than happy to sit down, we can, we can work with you, James and Bob and.
I just think it's important, we should have the answer to the question.
And there's a thousand ways to calculate this, so as we sit down.
We'll have to make some assumptions and.
Make some assumptions, so why don't we plan on doing that?
At least, but again, it's important to the existing users that we're addressing the question.
May I ask two quick questions? I had a head start on the rest of you guys because Brian and I had our own private meeting this morning, but this is the first time I've had a chance to see the drawings that you brought. And explain please why the shortest route isn't down Partial Road instead of down Bullard and Clyde? Is it just because there's no connection there to drop it into? It's a pressure system, it seems like you should be able to overcome that pressure and put it in at a different location than dropping it into a gravity sewer right at Runyon Lake?
That's a good idea.
And Partial on twenty-three.
Oh, okay.
Huge force main.
You're talking about coming down Partial and dropping into the gravity?
Yeah, straight down.
Instead of going all the way?
Well, instead of going all the way, south and then?
North.
Midwest, then north.
And then, boy, and I'm going to have to get the answer for you. We looked at that and there was a, there was a reason why we couldn't do it. Now, originally, when that line was drilled under, under the expressway, there was a second sleeve that was added so that we could put another line on because it was anticipated that at some point, Lake Tyrone would come that way. So there was a sleeve put under that road for just that purpose and to save a lot of money with the intent that it go over to, to Sidermup Crossing. But to take that waste, you know, long force main and dump it into a pump station in the middle of a development, we're going to have enormous odor issues. And that, and we'd have to do some upgrades for that pump, that lift station there at Sidermup Crossing. So there was a, that was the reason it didn't go over there. As for tying into that line, there's a reason for it and I'm not thinking of it right now, so I meant to get that for you.
The method of installation along Bullard Road south of Reed, would that be all underground drilling?
Yes. All directional drill the entire way, so with the exception of the bore pits.
Because that section of Bullard Road is one of the most scenic we have in the township and also one of the most dangerous.
Yeah.
All right, and then my second question is, if you compare the two maps, it appears that originally you were going to be connecting to the new course main near Spices Orchard.
Yes.
But if you look at the newer map, it shows that you're going all the way to the Clyde Road pump station. Why that change?
In part because, again, we have a long force main with sewage that has, has been sitting in there without air. And so we know from past experience that when we do that, there's all the waste coming out of Heartland here when that dumps into Clyde Road and it's had no oxygen, has an awful lot of odor associated with it. Of course, the one here at Cart Road is another example. And so to do that, one, we had concerns about odor issues at the orchard. And so the first thought was that we, we put some type of system to put a draw, enough of air draw on that to, so that no air escapes. So essentially pull a vacuum from the Clyde Road station. But for some reason, that wasn't feasible with the way the existing system works out there. And I'd have to talk to the engineer again about the details. But obviously, it would save money if we could dump it in there, but with the changes we would have to do at the receiving station, it just wasn't practical. So the decision was to run it all the way there.
And you said that you don't want to go off the bids again because it's just subtraction and addition. You're just adding at that point another couple hundred feet of directional boring?
Where?
At the termination, at the receiving station?
Well, there's more than a couple hundred feet. Yeah.
But that's just one of your things you're going to negotiate with the contractor that can say with the low bid?
Yes. Yeah, so they've already bid all of these sizes of force main, so it's a, it's a matter of additions and deletions to the contract.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Any other final questions? Thank you so much for your time this evening.
So moving forward, we're going to work to flesh out some of those numbers on the depreciation.
Super, sounds great. Thanks for your time tonight. Yep. Item seven B is dangerous building demolition, twelve five hundred Reed Road. Just in summary, it was in two thousand and thirteen that we were working with the existing owner. We gave them to, I believe, two thousand, it was three or four months to come up with an action plan. And then we gave them a whole nother year to come up and put a plan with the building department to bring the building up to a safe code. We have been in contact with not only the landowner, but the bank that owns it. And Kathy mentioned all the taxes are paid and for. And so we asked the bids to go out to demolish and we are prepared this evening to go forward with removing that building through Priest, I'm sorry, Priest Companies.
So will the amount that we're approving get, become a lien on the property?
Yes, correct.
And the property owner is aware or they, did they lose the house to the bank?
The bank was still deciding to initiate potential foreclosure. The property owner and the bank and their attorneys are all aware. The property owner still objects to this demolition. They've not complied with any direction previously given by the dangerous building hearing officer or this board and they've not presented any action plans to, to do that. It is, it is exactly a year and a half to the day that you had a hearing with the owner here. And here we sit and we're ready to move forward and we have no reason to believe that that site is going to be made safe for our public health, safety and welfare anytime in the near future.
Are there any questions for the manager?
A question I raised with James when I met with him earlier this week was how we're going to oversee the contractor to verify that he's doing what we've asked him to in the scope of work and whether there was some method to capture, I'm sure it would be done with our in-house staff, but is there a way to capture those costs and also charge those against the property?
And yes, as follow-up and looking at the ordinance, yes, we would capture those costs as well and that would be a part of what's put as a lien.
Would the motion to approve the demolition have to reflect that or would it just happen automatically?
No, the ordinance makes a full provision for how that process is required to go. We'll certainly provide a copy of that accounting to the board once all those costs are known.
Any other questions? If there aren't any, I'd entertain a motion.
I've moved to authorize the supervisor clerk to execute a contract with Priest Companies for the building demolition, site restoration of property at one two five zero zero Reed Road.
Motion by trustee Harper, second by trustee Germaine. Any discussion? Being none, all's in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed nay? Motion carries.
We'll make sure we get the address right.
Yep, yes. Okay, let's go to board and managers report. We are in a first meeting in March, second meeting in March, I apologize. We start with trustee Patrissi.
No report tonight.
Clerk Shofu?
No report.
Treasurer Horni?
If anybody sprayed them out for lunch, the township's having their chili cook-off here.
What time?
Noon, ish.
Ish. Ish? Okay, trustee Colani?
I have no report.
Trustee Germaine?
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. This morning, on behalf of the township, I was pleased to represent us at the Live United Way Thirty-Eighth Annual Meeting Volunteer and Recognition Breakfast. And I just wanted to point out that some of the special awards and recognitions that were issued by the Livingston County United Way, one was for a Young Person of Distinction Award and that went to John Maratus, who's a senior at Heartland High School.
Maratus, yeah, John.
And then of the four awards, Heartland High School was also recognized in the second one, the Charles Itzel Volunteer of the Year. That was another Heartland grad from a number of years ago. But they also recognized the Youth Organization of the Year and that was the Heartland High School Optimist Club, which is made up of dozens of people. So at this awards banquet and annual meeting, the Heartland community was well represented and I think it just goes to show the volunteer spirit that we have in our throughout our community. So I just wanted to report on that.
Is this something like this, James, real quick, on the new website that was launched, would be something that could be highlighted?
Yes. Between the volunteerism and the branding, for sure.
I think that would be a really good idea. I don't know who spearheads that.
Our work-related communications director will make that connection.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Trustee Harper?
No report.
Just briefly, we had board review last, last week and we had forty-eight applicants. That included all write-ins and candidates. I think we ended up having thirty or thirty-one actual people have a reservation. So it was very light. If you recall, a couple of years ago, we had two hundred and fifty. But we did turn it down to two days. So you know, we saved the whole day. Last year, we went three days. And Jim and the staff did a fine job with that. It went very smoothly, answered a lot of people's questions. Just got an update at halftime, Heartland Girls are down by a point to Zaggonaw Heritage. So they're right in that game. First time they've ever been to a quarterfinal.
That's all I have. Manager Wickman?
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Just a couple of highlights from the operational reports. Did want to, in addition to the chili cook-off tomorrow afternoon, we actually have the EDC Spark US Twenty-Three Regional Meeting that we're hosting at tomorrow at two. So if you're in the neighborhood and interested in attending that, happy to have you. I did receive a call from the Livingston Land Conservancy about that office at the Hero Center and they are interested in pursuing that. So one of the, we'll have to have some discussion about, and any preliminary feedback the board can provide, that'd be great, is you know, the terms of that. I mean, you have, we can deal with the, the public purpose that that organization serves and you know, provide the office space. There are other costs associated with utilities and maintenance and even the internet. Does the board have any thought or specific direction before I engage them in conversation about those things on having them use that space? It's kind of out of the blue, but want to keep that conversation. It's not a hurry, they.
Would we enter like a year, annual?
Yeah, we do. I imagine we'd prob, maybe do a one or two or three year. I'd have to look at what our past practice was on the other agreements, but we could do a couple of year agreement.
And they're, they're looking for one office building, but utilize the, the general area for their meetings?
Yeah, they're actually, they're not even saying that, the one office is enough room for their conference table and for their meetings, what that sounds like. And we'd make available the common area for them if they so chose. They only meet once every so couple of months in the evening, so I don't see this conflicting with anything.
So they don't need like a? So they don't need like a giant file cabinet or anything like that? If there was another nonprofit that perhaps needed to share an office, would they be able to do something like that?
I can inquire about that.
You know, if there was another, see a scouting group or something that just needed a place to land every month?
Yeah.
I'd hate to tie something up if there was another need for a nonprofit to have an office space.
Yeah.
Something that's, they'd be so irregular.
Certainly, it's understandable, and it's also sat vacant for
I understand.
Two years since we've had it open, so.
This could be the beginning of a bigger.
Yeah, right, yeah.
If it came to that, there's space available in the basement now. It's fully fire suppressed.
It is fire suppressed now.
So that could, if we really want to get into the renting business for office space. But there are other options to consider.
This doesn't mean any criteria that we would have. Is there criteria that we have for utilizing space?
We've not set a policy. I mean, generally, we've recognized that the office space we have provided has been for, you know, nonprofit, community-oriented organizations that provide a public service that serves the public purpose. And so, I mean, we can, you don't necessarily, you don't have to charge a rent if you feel that the value of what they provide to our public is, and even exchange for that. It's the other stuff we could also do. If you want to say it's got to be a rent, then we can say that too. I just don't know if there's any strong feelings on that. I can navigate those waters. Don't want to step out of line of what the board might think.
Do you know if they were paying a rent at their previous?
They were not.
They were not?
Yeah. They are a very small-budget organization, for sure.
Any strong feelings one way or the other?
If you have any other thoughts, let me know.
Thank you.
Yep. And then I would also highlight, again, thank you to the support of the board and from SEMCOG for the Taubman Fellowship. I don't yet know what the schedule will be, whether it's in June or July, but I'll keep you posted. I will be attending the SEMCOG General Assembly, which is coming up on 26th. I don't know if everybody's hopefully getting the SEMCOG notifications now, but I know a couple of you are already looking at going. And then also want to acknowledge as well the hard work that Public Works had put into, we did get $100,000 from the road commission out of the $800,000 pool they made available for pavement preservation, so to get an eighth of that. There were 15 other projects on there, and obviously a lot more townships than that, so.
Now, where would that be dedicated to?
To pick a project. I mean, it's just going to go onto one of the projects we were doing with the village money. So I think they, Fenton Road is it? They said Fenton Road.
Yeah, on paper, it's going to be assigned and it will be recognized in the Fenton Road project because it had to be one of the primary roads, so something like Bergen would not count for that.
You know, Pleasant Valley wouldn't work, huh?
Is that another township?
It was preservation anyway, wasn't it?
It was for pavement preservation. It wasn't for rehab or, you know, filling the grand canyon.
But that road right there is the most impassable road in Heartland right now.
I can play up rotters and stitches right here from my email, showing you worse.
You know what I'm talking about.
Okay.
Okay. The last thing I wanted to highlight is we have been approached by a neighborhood about doing an SAD for garbage collection. We kicked this around a little bit, and we were willing to explore it maybe a little bit further with them. We, of course, talked about with the road plan, we talked about in the strategic plan about possibly exploring a township-wide system down the road. We were looking at maybe, looking at a couple neighborhoods in that area on a voluntary basis if they want to petition and do an SAD for garbage and have the cost savings and the less heavy trucks in the area. We were looking to pursue that. Before we go too far, though, I don't want, if the board has a strong objection to that or any other strong feelings on that, we'd like to certainly know that before we waste too much of time on it.
It's not so much wasting the time.
Yeah.
It's just we have so much on our plate, and I think it's a good idea. You know, to some degree, you do get a lot of impact on different days of the week, these heavy trucks coming onto the roads, and we already have enough trucks on our roads as it is, so. It's something I think needs to be looked at and explored. Maybe doing, like you said, a pilot kind of study to see if there's, if the savings that could be had could be translated throughout the township.
That's part of the thought, is limiting it to a certain, a small amount, enough to gain some valuable knowledge.
It seems to be worthwhile, but I'm sure, I'm sure if you go to some communities where they have, township-wide, they've probably already done that study.
Oh, sure.
Have determined that it is less expensive and less impact, so.
We know that.
I don't even know if a pilot program makes sense, so I don't, I could go either way. It's just we've got so much going on. But I'd hate to have all their, you know, these repairs done to our roads and spend the kind of money and then turn around and not deal with that issue.
Well, that's the subdivision that's requesting it. It's one that paid their own SAD.
Yeah, Rolling Hills.
Yeah, I don't blame them.
Now, they want the garbage.
Well, and I know Mill Point is looking at Andover, and, I mean, we didn't, we have that on our list.
They're actually revising the scope to improve it.
Throughout the interval? Yeah. Now, I set up the reserve fund. They should probably have a pretty good reserve fund there back when I was, back years ago when I was on the board, so. In any case, yeah, I think we should explore this, but I think the board should discuss priorities.
Well, if you were to do it, it's going to be on a small scale.
Yeah, we make sure that it fit in with, and B.
If you came in front of the board and had a proposal that's minimal, I think that's what I'm hearing from the board, is we're not looking to get into a full-blown step test pilot, see if it's doable. You object to that? And James could come back with a, and I think there's a lot of people going to be concerned that we're not putting you in a deeper spot. Dig away?
Dig away.
So you can add that as a feature?
Sure.
Okay.
That's all I had. Thank you.
I do have one question.
Yeah.
When is your meeting and the conference? What are the dates? I don't know which one you're going to yet, but.
It'd be beginning of June. It's three weeks starting. One of them is, I think, the first Monday in June, and the other one is the first Monday in July, starting.
We have, tend to believe, only have planned one board meeting.
Correct.
So we want to make sure that we coordinate that.
Right.
Whenever you find out.
Yep, for sure.
Okay.
I have a question for James, too. I think it was at our last meeting, we unanimously approved an extension to the sales agreement with Mayberry Homes. Have you heard anything from them? Are they going to meet their requested deadline? And secondly, have they provided the detailed market analysis report that they said was pending?
Yeah, so I have every reason to think they're going to meet it. They wouldn't have only asked for a 30-day, like they think, just ask for another one. If they needed 45 days, they would have asked for that. And emails from them indicate they're definitely at work, crunching their numbers, asking about the water costs and all that kind of thing. The detailed market study, I believe you should have received. I had received that from them shortly after that meeting, and I thought I'd email it out to the board. I will double-check that I did that. We did get the detailed market study, yes, and I'll make sure that that got sent out to the board.
And then my second question is, I understand that the new church on M-59 might be, might have a developer to purchase some of the property behind them. Do you have an idea on a timeline for that happening, or is it too premature?
We just had a very preliminary meeting with them last week. Of course, they want to start tomorrow, so we're working on them on a feasible timeline, but they are interested in moving fairly quickly.
And that's within our SAD for sewer district, right?
Yeah, they have already had sewer REUs from the Crestwood development when it was there before. It'd be new water REUs, I guess.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Being none, we'll move on to item number nine. I'm sorry, number 8A. Does anybody have any other questions for James logging on?
And I can help you offline, too.
Yeah, you're going to have to help me because I think, for some reason, my account might have been deleted.
Okay.
That's why I can't log on.
Okay.
Okay. We'll move on to number nine, A. We changed the capital improvement discussion from our work session earlier, and I think we were down to what we're going to add on for this coming year.
There was some discussion about maybe adding the workout stations, and there was also the disc golf course. But I think we, I'm not sure we were still talking about the workout station. We're talking about disc golf, and the question would be whether or not, if you want to move forward with that, how much the township would be willing to put towards that. There's a recommendation on the table from the Parks Task Force of $6,500. The board can do more, less, or the same, or nothing, if you want to move forward with it this year at all. We just want to communicate that to the group so they know what to fundraise and.
Bob, what's that basically for? Baskets and pads to tee off?
Yeah, essentially, they're, the goal of the group was to primarily minimize the maintenance and actually run the course through as many natural features in the woods as it can. My directive, basically, working with them, was we'd really like to keep the maintenance to a minimum. We don't have staff to do this, and that was their goal, and they designed it.
So who would maintain it?
There isn't much to maintain.
There's a little maintenance that may be required would be on the township.
No, they like it high. They like to, they don't like the grass.
There's no, you just walk through the weeds?
Yeah.
It has not been proved. It's conceptual. We don't know any of the details.
You might brush hog it every now and then.
All I'm suggesting is that we have whatever maintenance needs to have, what that number's going to be.
Yes.
Which has not been determined because we don't even know how many holes it's going to be yet.
Do you know that back, the last Parks Plan McKenna did, they put a $30,000 number in for 18 holes out here. I always thought that was high. I mean, you basically have two squares of concrete and then a metal basket for each hole. Yes, you have some work to maybe cull some trees or that kind of a thing, but. So it's a question of the board of if you'd like, how much money, if you want to even move forward with it this year, how much township funds would be put towards it?
I think $6,500 sounds pretty reasonable.
I would support that. So if you're making a motion?
I'll make a motion for $6,500 towards the park, uh, disco.
I'd support that.
Any discussion?
$6,514.
Okay.
It's in the, the way it came from, I don't know. Might need that 14.
Okay.
Being none, discussion, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed nay. Motion carries. And do we need a motion to delete the dog park at this point or move it?
Uh, we can, if there's not objection, we can see the consent.
I don't think we're eliminating you. We're just moving it down.
Not doing it this year. We'll look at it in CIP. Then the only other one then that I wasn't sure if the board wanted to discuss was the parking lot at Heritage Park. About adding spaces. I had heard board members, especially after Winter Fats, talking about that, and certainly high-end soccer would tell you they would, could use the parking spaces.
Do you have some of the cost on that?
I think roughly we were looking at $60,000 to $75,000. Depending on the material brought in, I think, quite frankly, we could level it and, you know, essentially have people park on the dirt as overflow or something much cheaper than that.
How many spaces would we get?
Uh, it would actually double, so it would be pushy. I believe that the way it's designed now was 50% capacity of what was originally proposed. The second addition, second phase of parking would double.
We need that park. What do you think?
I agree.
My personal opinion is when they're using it, it's dry enough for them to park on the.
When are they, when are they? Are you talking the grass? Is that, the issue is not necessarily parking on the grass, that it's not level, and it actually, and that's what I mean. If we want to forego the actual addition, additional material, I think we could level it much cheaper.
I agree, and I don't think it should be, I don't think it should be on the grass. For one thing, people don't know where to park correctly.
No, I was suggesting that we rope it off or stake it off somehow so that people would know, but.
I think they're talking the same thing. Do it right.
I'm a proponent of doing things right the first time. It's always cheaper. You keep their quality up.
I was just, I was talking, thinking temporary.
I think we tried that last year.
But having attended a number of games there with my nieces playing and so on, I recognize that the parking is short, but I also recognize that some people don't want to walk. They want to park as close to the field as they can. And if that means driving up on the grass next to the driveway or the parking lot, that's where they end up putting the vehicle. And I don't think that's right. I think, you know, if we're trying to maintain a high-quality park, we have to have some mechanism, and maybe we'll get into this another time when we talk about our park ordinance, but we need to have some way to get people to park where they're supposed to park, whether that means additional signage or some type of physical barrier.
Well, and it's a good segue into the park ordinance.
Well, I would offer this. There's a Parks Site Plan Committee, or Parks Plan Committee.
Advisory Committee.
Advisory, whatever it's called now.
Pac-Man.
On the 30th?
Yes. And if that will be discussed as well as the revised CIP.
We could bring that topic of parking up because the original plan, I thought, had the pavilion and then the parking behind it. The pavilion was between the both parking lots. There's many plans.
There was an iteration that had that. The final plan did not have that.
So we could at least, that entity could explore it, come back at our next board meeting? Just.
And if there's no clear consensus to the board on that, I'm not trying to push it.
If I could, you know, I think I would have a preference towards that. I could probably develop an accurate quote for you guys as well. I think that would be valuable information prior to making a decision.
Is that acceptable?
Yeah, I think so.
Because we could have that be an agenda item on our next board meeting?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Now, I'm going to be sensitive to the board's time, since we did start earlier this evening. We still have to, we have a closed session to go into. We have to set a date for all these other items that are discussion items. So maybe we make that first, and then you decide how long you want to continue. I want to be sensitive to your time and.
Well, for one thing, I think we got Bob here, and he's probably involved in the sidewalk ordinance, too. Get, be sensitive. He'll come in every time, every meeting.
Well, I understand.
He'll be at the next meeting as well.
Well, yeah.
My thought is that that meeting, that.
Here's what my thought, a couple things real quick. I think the ordinance stuff, if the consensus is that it is, now that they've been drafted, they should go to the, get reviewed by the legal counsel.
They draft them?
Do they get, do they get?
They have, oh, they're subject to review by.
They've had them for a very long time.
They've had them, yeah.
Oh, he has? I thought I read in here he didn't have them. A couple of things then. I just have really one. On the parks ordinance, I think we need to address personal aircraft like and drones. Not prohibit them, but if people want to land a hot air balloon in our parks or operate drones, they need to have a permit. And I think that's.
I went on a hot air balloon last year.
They can help.
And how can you get a, how can you get a permit?
Can't, you can't.
Well, no, I mean, I'm not talking about emergency landing, but, you know, I don't think it would be prudent to necessarily have someone set up their shop in a park and launch them, launch their.
Yeah, launching would be different.
So that's what I'm referring to is, it's, and I'm not necessarily prohibiting them. Drones are another issue because they're becoming much more, less, they're becoming less expensive. And while I don't necessarily have a problem with them, using them, but we should know who is using them in case we get a complaint from neighbors that are in the area who like to sunbathe or whatever they like to do in their privacy is being.
It's a safety issue, too.
It's a safety.
Lose control, they fall in a crowd.
Exactly, so that's what I saw was missing from the park ordinance. I think we need to address that.
Are they addressing that at the high schools? I was just thinking, like, if you had some parent out there with one of them during the soccer match, doing the, I mean, you know what, well, you see what they do on TV with the big wires, but I can see somebody over there hovering over the center thing.
The FAA just passed the regulations regarding the drones. They just had the proposal within this past month, you know, trying to fix their regulations out of. They have, they have to stay within line of sight of the drone. You can't, like, let it go into areas. You got to be within line of sight. They limited their height to 500 feet.
And those that did pass, are they in effect now?
That's what the FAA proposed.
Oh, as it said.
Yeah, but the National Park Service has banned them, except under, unless without a permit, I think.
Right.
And that's kind of where I'm going. I don't want to prohibit them. I just don't think.
If you're able to let yourself learn how to fly it, that's one thing, but if you're in a crowd.
And the crowd can take pictures and, yeah.
Point of order, are we on item 9?
I suggest we schedule a work session, go to closed session, and go home.
Oh, I forgot about closed session.
That's what I was concerned about, the stuff. So I would, is the next Tuesday work for everybody?
Yep.
Should be the twenty-fourth? And what would be a good time? Six or six-thirty? Six-thirty better?
Six-thirty.
Looks like it.
Six-thirty would be much better for
Okay, six-thirty, and then what we'll put on the special meeting are all these items A through G, and we'll get through what we see. Is that how we want to approach it?
If we can. We may also have a zoning inspector for you, if we can put it on there.
That's fine. Any other loose ends? Because we don't, really don't have another scheduled meeting for another
Two weeks after that?
Two weeks after that. Is that fair? Okay. Bob, thank you for your time this evening, and I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Chofu?
I think I should have to write, read the
Yeah, I need to, I'll read it.
I know, it's a reason.
The Township Board adjourned to closed session to consult with its attorney regarding trial or settlement strategies in connection with the following cases, with the reason that an open meeting would have a detrimental financial effect on the litigation or settlement